I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Joint Protection, the Person and Property Subcommittee slash Town Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, 6:00 PM in the Veterans Meeting Room. Agenda item number two, roll call. Counselor Provost?
Present.
Counselor Shenyu excused or running late. Commissioner Montigny is sitting in for him.
Present.
So we have a quorum. Agenda item number three, review slash discuss acceptance of a donation of 5,000 from the Southbridge Credit Union and allow the Chief of Police to use it at their discussion. Entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council accept this donation.
So move. Second.
Town Manager?
Again, just a donation from Southbridge Credit Union, $5,000. I let the Chief, if he has anything to add to that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just so there's no secrets. This is going to augment some of the funding that we need for camera system townwide. The Southbridge Business Partnership donated $10,000 last month. The fee for this service is about $15,000 per year. The credit union stepped up to help offset some of those costs. So there'll be cameras as you enter the community or the downtown core area.
All right, any questions? If not, all is favorable. Ms. Swann, present. Agenda item number four, review slash discuss call fire department recruitment for full-time firefighter positions. Counselor Shenyu is here.
Okay, I'm gonna miss much.
And now.
I'll excuse myself.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman.
We just started. Uh, so this is just a discussion about the recruitment for the full-time firefighter positions. I guess I'll start with George. Do you have anything to say?
Well, let me a minute, go to the next person.
Anybody out there?
All right, I guess I'm.
Go ahead.
What I'd like to see is a call department for reasoning why it's not going to work for our town and how we could utilize a call department for future recruitment of firefighters. Maybe that could be, I know we've had a lot of discussions about it. I know some of the concerns of the cost related to outfitting a call and the longevity that they don't seem to have. So I guess my question is, how can we make it work? Or can we make it work? And how do we go about it?
Chief?
So I guess I'm looking at the way that this is worded in the, in the article. Review and discuss the qualified department recruitment for a full-time firefighter position. So let me address that part first. Over the last three processes that we've had for full-time firefighters, not one of our call members have applied for a full-time position. With that being said, our call department currently is made up today of eight members. One of them is a chaplain. Two of them are in private industry. Two of them are in the fire service roles. One is in law enforcement, police department. And two are minimally, minimally active and have no interest in moving on any further. We're maintaining structure and readiness, but we also participate in, is, participation is becoming increasingly difficulty or straining towards these members. We do have training officers trying to organize training events for these guys. We've recently just had a training in Auburn for two days. One member showed up during that training. So it's very, getting very difficult and the reasons behind that are, there's multiple reasons. Obviously, the standards nowadays for a qualified firefighter, you know, it's, it's not, no longer 100 hours and hang around the station and get a pair of boots and a rubber coat and a metal hat. There's actually standards, 200 to 400 hours per, a year roughly is what happens. You know, once certified, members must also maintain compliance with OSHA, SCBA stuff, CPR stuff, hazmat refreshers. Now, as I said, the, the members that we currently have already have their full-time jobs elsewhere. This has turned into being a call member and being certified and regular and ready to go for readiness to supplement our, our full-time fire department, it's a lot of time. Back in 2000, I pulled some stats from 2009. 2009, we had 14 qualified firefighters. At that time, well, at this time, there's only one of those members that's still here. He's the captain on the call department and he is very limited on what he does because he has a full-time business. Like I said, we try to keep up our current staff as trained as we can. They do their fit testing annually. They check their SCBAs when they can. And again, we invite them to come in and do station recalls and fire line calls and things like that. And they're, they're always busy. So George, you're correct in regards to the amount of money it costs for these, these members. We have in history past done two sets of firefighter structuring firefighting gear, which told us about $5,000 per, dollars per set. You know, so there's $10,000 in outlay right there. This doesn't, the costs aren't not figured as obviously human resources for a physical. For I think what's $1,500 is roughly a firefighter physical. So the outlay to continue to maintain and manage the, the call department is, is costly. Although you've never seen it being stricken from my budget, we continue to move forward with, with, with having the call department and supporting them. Recruitment and retention, retention is, is something that we're doing at the, at the career level too. We're having problems doing retention. The call departments, as I said, two members work for different fire departments around the area after we've trained them. They worked for two fire departments that do not run the ambulance. That is a huge feather in regards to workload in regards to those two towns where those two members reside. Some of you or all of you may know that over the last several years, we've been having some, some conversations with the school, school committee, our school, school board and the superintendent. Successfully this past year, we got into, the, the door was open every day, every morning, between a few of our members to include myself, the deputy and TJ Edwards and a couple of other members that helped out. We're training seven students right now to become, to, to challenge the task for firefighter 1-2. So we've gone out and beyond to try to recruit members to the call department. I'll tell you what, these kids are excited, they're, they're there. They got gear, they have air packs and they're going through some of the similar, actually the, the training platform for firefighter 1-2 that's been, been taught to all these, all, all, all these other members within the department. You know, looking forward, I, I think, I think we're going to continue this, this process. But I'll tell you, right now, the call department doesn't really respond on a lot of calls because of their busy schedules. We'll look at new, new applications as they come in. But you gotta remember, we have to vet those applications through human resources to make sure they have a driver's license, their application is complete, and then obviously talk to their references and pretty much go from there. The last couple of applications that we received, didn't even make it that far because of certain reasons. It's not that we're not trying. I will say, Mr. Dow said at the meeting last week, I have been keeping you informed on the call department stuff and I've told you that over the years. And I will say that we'll keep moving forward. There's just no lackluster for people to become a call department member because of the training standards. I go through a whole PowerPoint after they do get vetted through it. It's, it's, it basically tells you, you've become a member, but you have to commit to a Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday to be sponsored by the Southbridge Fire Department to go to the, either the Stowe Fire Academy or the Springfield Fire Academy. The most recent person that we had in there was removed because of medical reasons, which was just last fall. And finally, I will say that we've hired plenty of people from the call department to the full-time department to include just two, about 18 months ago with one of our, our members now is, is a full-time firefighter. So I, you know, I'm open for any suggestions. I agree with George, I, I agree that we keep, keep it going. We're doing the best we can to try to attract call members, but it's, it's, it's a tough process. I think there's a lot more human resources elements that you guys aren't aware of. Obviously, we have a lot of hiring that's going on within the town. And I think, I think that's everything I think I had to say.
Counselor Dow?
Yes, go.
Chairman Lozlo?
Just a quick question. We have a, and I'm not a firefighter and I'm not going to make believe I am one. But the 21 people apply for one position and the 21 people, we get one person, they go gone. 10 of those 21 people were not, didn't have any fire experience, but they wanted to be a firefighter. To me, that's a red light. That's a label for us that you want to tap into. I would love to have the people that come in front of PPP, have a discussion about firefighter. I want to see it. I want to see those 10 people that probably worked at a cash register or a younger person that's getting started in life. The only way you pick a career is when you get into their, their world. Unless you don't want them and, and, and you know, they don't feel welcome, you know, if they applied for this job to be a firefighter and they're not qualified, I get it. But to me, I'd grab those 10 people or 20 of them, because we only picked one. Those would be the people I'd be dragging in to say, we want to talk to you about other things. And I, I would love to have an informal discussion at PPP with the 10 people that were on there that had no fire experience. Why did they apply? They applied because maybe they want to be a firefighter and maybe they do want to step into a, they don't know about it. But I think in any career search, you gotta give them a taste of it first so you don't push them away. If you keep pushing them away, it's just not going to work. And I think in this case here, we had a pretty big pool, okay? And to see who we appointed, which is nothing against the gentleman, but came from the paramedic, but it wasn't a firefighter. He's going to get trained to be a firefighter, if I'm correct in saying that. But then we had firefighters there and we went to fire department. I, I just don't understand the whole concept of how they get in and what the criteria is. If they're not all ready, we're going to train them anyways. So what's the difference if we train a newbie? They'll have no bad habits and, and you can get maybe people that are closer that would answer a call. The further they're away, the less you're going to have. The bell's going to ring and I'll come. We're already experiencing that. I'm just saying thoughtful, just training outreach, that's all I'm saying. You all reach those schools. I commend you for that. That's getting those kids at very young age interested in firefighter. And then if you can get in, because I know when I was in high school, we had Dickie, uh, Bobby Athanis was on a football team with us. We'd be in the middle of an apple fight and he'd throw us out of the car because it's a three-bagging blaster. This is a high school kid. So how do you get, he has a scanner in the car. He wanted to be a firefighter. So to me, my experience from the young guys at Southbridge High School at the time, you know, I can list all of the guys that ended up being firefighters in Southbridge and going on to other departments. I just, I want to be part of the cure. I don't want to be there, you know, throwing stones at an issue when we can say, let's get together and get some people in here and talk to them. Maybe, maybe we can open doors for them to try and recruit them into a call thing. Don't make the call department sound so stringent with, you know, there's a different way when you recruit people. You, you gotta be more welcoming, you gotta build them up in your profession. Your profession is a different profession than all professions. So for me, you've got to get in those young men's head, in their, in their likability of, you know, is this what you really want to do for a living? Because this is full-time and get them ready to come up in full-time. I'm just saying, try and get a bit of pool, try and get a more qualified pool. I know the council would step up and, and push for that. That's building your fire department at the lowest level, which is the call. Just an opinion, I'm just, like I said, I'm not a firefighter. But in business, we try and, I take people that know nothing about concrete and I train them. Okay, they start down low, you know, and then as they work their way up, they know what they're doing, they work, they work their way. Because they're not, they're not a lot of people walking in the door, do what I do for a living. I gotta walk in together. Thanks.
Deputy Chief?
Just to respond to the chairman's comment, in this last round, there was one member or resident from Southbridge that applied for this position who was not qualified. And the first thing that was made was a recommendation to interest the person in the call department. As you're aware, about 90% of our work is EMS. So when somebody from Southbridge applies and they're not an EMT, there's no ifs, ands or buts about it. I can't do anything about that. You have to hold EMT certification for us to consider you as an employee. So that recommendation was made to offer a, a discussion about the call department. So there is not this pool of 20 people from Southbridge that applied in this last process. So, and these are issues that all of the departments around us are facing. You know, just the stats in the local area here, Auburn eliminated their call department in 2020 because they couldn't keep up with the training requirements, bringing people in. 192 hours a year is what's required to maintain training under standard for any firefighter, regardless of whether they're called, career, and based on the things that we do for our call firefighters, two sets of gear, same equipment that everybody else gets. I know that fire doesn't care whether you're a career firefighter, qualified firefighter or volunteer firefighter. So we make the same things available to our call firefighters that we do with the career firefighters. So these other departments around us, Auburn, no call firefighters after 2020. Charlton, as of the 2026 year, there will be no more call firefighters. Sturbridge, they have 10 call firefighters right now. Oxford, they have seven. Dudley is the highest department around here, they have 20. Webster has 13. Some of the other communities that are somewhat similar to Southbridge, Oxbridge, they have 15, but they said that there's only about 10 that are active. Northbridge, very similar to Southbridge, 13 call firefighters. And Southbridge, we have eight. So the same issues are being faced in these other communities and it's a nationwide problem. When this topic came up, I went and referenced an article that I read a few years ago and went back and found it. And it's quoted from a gentleman named Schrauser. Pennsylvania is a high, high-density volunteer call fire state. So the number is estimated at 30,000 volunteers in 2021. That number in 1975 was 360,000. So there are 1/10 of the volunteer or qualified firefighters in the state of Pennsylvania that there were 50 years ago. So this is a problem that everyone is facing.
Chairman Lozlo?
And my, my point is, I agree with everything you're saying. What can we do to turn the tide or try to turn the tide? That's all I'm saying is let, let's talk, let's have the conversation. I mean, I, I just think that if people are not applying, there's a reason why. Maybe you as the chief should go to district or whatever and say, how many more regulations? Remember, you're tied to a bigger network. And when the big boys say, this is what we want, they squeeze and then the, the juice goes all over the place. So if they're over-regulating what this is supposed to be, I, I think maybe we need to, to talk to some people. I mean, if you just want to push people out of the firefighting business, you're doing a good job of it. You, the big guys out in Boston, I mean, I just think that we should get creative on how we do it. I think you going to the high school is like the best thing that you could do because you're going to get them before they even get a job. You're going to go to school and they're going to hang you around the fire department.
Well, they all work at McDonald's right now.
Right, exactly. I mean, volunteerism across the nation. Look, if you look at Southbridge volunteer work outside of firefighting, it's not the greatest, but it's still there. You just gotta try and keep working at it. And I'm just saying, I'm interested in working at it as a counselor. You rattle off numbers on budget. I'm interested in working on that stuff, you know? I'm not going to tell you how to play the fire or do your job, but I want to be supportive of, okay, guys, we had a lot of people apply, 21. I don't know if I'm in HR or personnel, but as a counselor, I'm interested in saying, can we get them in a room? And talk to them? I mean, informally, just say, hey guys, why did you apply? You have no qualifications, but you applied. What is your interest? Why are you so interested in being a firefighter? But you're not, you don't have all the, the things that you need to be a firefighter. And, and try and knock down some of those barriers. I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. I just think what's smart enough as, as a joint thought process to do something to try and get more on. And if, and if it's a dead issue, you want to abolish it, then, then if that's the option, that's the option. But don't go in halfway, put the money up, don't put the money up. Either we make a commitment or we don't make a commitment, but what I'm saying.
Chief? I, I will say that you're right in, in some aspects of it in regards to it. We, we have gotten call members and we've gotten them to go to the fire academy. They, there was three of them that went to Stowe for a period and they got their one too. So we've done that. I've gotten kids into the EMT program at Quinn Sig. I sit on the board there. So we are doing the best we can with additionally, most of these kids, these seven kids that are in the high school program want to become either medical something EMT or, so we're trying to mold them. We're trying to get them to learn how to hold a saw, hold an axe, because they've never done it. So that's where we're at right now. We're starting at the bare bones basic. When everybody in this room that started being a call firefighter, they had a little bit of experience. Their fathers or their uncles or their grandfathers showed them how to run a saw or an axe or what the fire service was. Mr. Chairman, we're not getting those people now. And I'm okay with, let's try to create something that we already have in place right now. And it's working. Hopefully, all seven of these kids will go through. I, I'm open to whatever we need to do to, to get some sort of enforcement from the council or human resources or the town manager's office, let's do it. But like you said, if it's not helping us and we're spending a lot of money, we're spending a lot of money on gear because it's not cheap and it's just going to keep going up, let's get rid of it and supplement somewhere else in the department. And I know that's not what you want to hear, but the, the callbacks don't happen now. It's just going to get worse as we have a couple more retirements happening. So to have the staff in the station is where we need to be going.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chairman, for your, uh, you answered your 19, whatever. Wasn't a lot of regulation and a lot of rules. You don't need to go to the academy, you can trade in-house. That's what I did when I was called firefighter. I don't have to have a EMS certification. I did the CPR in-house because I'm a qualified firefighter, I'm not an ambulance or run whatever. I don't know, the rule changed. You don't need to be a doctor to be qualified fighter. Call, call fire, volunteer call firefighter. You come, you help. When you, the guys go out in ambulance, those firefighters, they come, jump on the fire trucks. They don't need to respond to ambulance call, they can respond to fire. They can come back, help the full-time. We used to wash the hose, we used to hang them, pick up the gear, they clean the trucks. It is a lot of work that qualified fighter, they can be done. It's not necessary to jump in, in, in the ambulance and go do a doctor job, number one. Number two, where do you advertise it before? When you on the common, you have all these people come and party, did you have one of your firefighters put aside? Come see the fire department, if you like to volunteer. Did anybody talk about it anywhere? This is, you started doing the school just this period because we advise you to do that. We come up with those ideas. Don't make.
Wrong. I'm going to just say wrong, Mr. Chairman. That's wrong.
When I finish, you can talk back. Okay? Yes, it is what I did.
It's wrong.
Whatever you said before, I don't believe having the stuff you're saying. You always here sell us stuff and it's not going to go through anymore. I'm being honest to you. 2009, my brother applied twice. The application was lost, I, I looked for it, nobody knew what it is. Oh, he bring it to the front counter, disappear. Good man in the public, I will hear him from the residents saying, we don't want a qualified fighter. We're not going to make it happen. Stop giving me stories to make me believe what you say. I don't believe it. You guys don't on purpose. We was have four call men here apply. You hired five from Leicester, those call men left, one in Webster, one in different town. The last one was he applied, he doesn't have a, a training, whatever you say. He said he want one more year, stay on the call department because he want more experience. He wanted to get one from Northbrook Field. And then the guy left the next day, applied for somewhere else, he got the job. Enough is enough. This is our town, we want the call department, we want to work on it. This is our money, I pay tax, he pay tax, whatever live in this town pay tax. It's our decision, it's not anymore. We don't want to spend money. We spent money crazy on you guys. We built a fire department, we did a lot of stuff for the town. We want our kids, like you said, they don't have no clue what's going on. Did you guys anywhere promoted, did anybody do like a special program? Did anything was coming out there and you guys talk about qualified fighter? Nothing. The only thing we see in the public, showing muscle, yelling, standing in front of our face, disrespect us. We didn't get elected from two or three people. 17,000 people live in the town with a vote for us. We're not going to accept any disrespect anymore. You respect us, we respect you. I'm talking as a general, not straight to you. You guys disrespect us, we're not going to respect you anymore. Enough is enough. We want the qualified fighter. You guys need to figure more advertisers and accept application because you're not going to do it. And when somebody volunteer live in town, he have the first priority to be trained and earn money and be qualified fighter or full-time in the town of Southbridge. I think I'm clear when I said, I don't want to get in deeper and, and, and go more fogged what I want to say. Thank you.
Chief?
So just so everybody understands that we do do outreach education. We do the SAFE program every year. We go to all the schools and we talk about fire prevention and fire safety and about firefight, about firefighters. We do have open houses, house over, houses over the years. We go to the Harvest Festival, any, any event that's at the town hall, we go to those situations and it's always talked about how to become a firefighter. We actually went to the Harvest Fair with not only the fire department table last year, we also had a CERT table. A CERT table is an auxiliary that comes in and they can become a CERT member. I've gotten grants for CERT. I had a list of 17 people from that CERT event at that table and I returned every phone call and every email and nobody called back. How, it, I'm stuck, there's nothing I can do about it. So in, in, in essence, I, I think that, you know, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, for speaking out of turn. And I'm, I'm generally not that way, but like I said to the, to the chairman of the council, we will do whatever we can to move forward to try to continue to support the called fire department.
Thank you. Counselor Callen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your, um, chief. So the call fire department, I'm, excuse my ignorance, because I'm not a real. That's, is that a volunteer position or is that, or are they paid per call?
So as soon as they start and they get appointed through the call department as an official member, they receive the appropriate paperwork, it's physical, everything like that. And as soon as they start doing training and getting gear and things like that, they do get paid. So there is a line item in the budget for call fire.
So there is, so they do, so it is a paid position?
Correct.
So they're part-time. Basically, it sounds like they come when they want to come. They're not like required to, to respond to fires, is that correct?
That is correct.
So at this point in time, has the department had any issues with handling the calls we have without qualified, qualified firefighters?
So if you're asking that question, if the qualified department's members do not respond, we either will have a lack of manpower at the scene, if that's the situation, depending on what the incident is, or we'll have to request mutual aid.
So, and when we, when we do have calls, are the qualified, are our qualified firefighters responding regularly? Or do we find ourselves in situations where they don't come? Where they don't, we don't have enough and they're not coming?
Honestly, they don't come.
They don't come.
We've given them the abilities.
So we've trained, we've trained all these people. We've got how many, you said we have eight?
We have eight.
And, and we've trained these eight people with our town, with our, using town funds. And it sounds like it's a fairly expensive process, but yet they're not showing up for the fires that we're asking them to participate. Now, how are they maintaining their certification if they're not being there? How, how do they meet their hours, prior hours if they're not coming to?
So, so through the chair, so generally, they, they have to maintain their CPR certification, which is a mandatory thing. If they have their EMT certification, we do give them access to the education platform that we have and allow them to continue to get the education credits to do that. The firefighter stuff is generally done on training nights, but I, as the deputy said, it's 192 hours just for the career firefighter. We struggle trying to get that done in the annual basis too. So we do the best and we follow the basics in regards to training.
But they, but they're required to meet the training standards as well?
We all are, yes.
Right, right. I mean, it's all. And, and we're paying for the, to, for the training, right? I mean, is this, is this something the town pays for to train firefighters?
That is correct. What, in this, when we do it in the station, when they go to the academy, we don't train, we don't pay for them to do that. So when they go to the 10, actually, it's not 10 weeks, it's like three-month firefighter training academy that's on their own time. But we give them the equipment and we have to sponsor them to be.
Sponsor them? Do you have to, is it, do they have to pay for it?
Nope.
Okay, so it's just.
Just like the career academy, theirs is three months and the full-time academy is 10 weeks.
But what about, like the, the annual training? You said it was 192.
192 hours.
192 hours of training?
Yep.
And that is something we have to pay for or not?
That is correct, we pay for those.
So we're paying for the training, but they're not responding to the calls?
Correct.
So if we're already having a. So, if we're already having to go to mutual aid when these folks aren't responding, I'm not really sure why we even have a call, a call firefighter department. Quite honestly. I mean, if we're training these people, they're not showing up, then what's the point? Real, what's the point? You know, I would, I would say cut it. Why, why, why do we keep doing this? Because it's nostalgia? That's not a good reason to keep something. Right? You know, I gotta tell you, today, it's very difficult to get people to volunteer for it. I mean, this is, they get paid when they go out, but they're not going out. It's voluntary for them to go out. Required to go out. So, they're putting a burden on the town. Why, 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 why do we keep doing this? Why do we keep doing this? So, you know, I'd be favored just cutting this program. I don't, I don't see the point of it. Or this team seems to be a waste of town money.
Have you reached out to them? Asked them why they're not showing up?
Do you really wanna know the answer? The short answer is, is basically the amount of pay that they're being paid for career, full-time firefighters, they're already making that amount. Over a month on that. That's the short easy answer. They're making, they're making that.
When was the last time they showed up? Any, any of them?
Well, just through you for the answer is that last week we had training in Auburn. One of our call guys showed up, very active. He actually occasionally does show up, depending on his work schedule. Does come in for, for calls, but not very often.
Counselor Shannon.
Maybe to help Counsel Kelly. I was a call firefighter. I started out as an auxiliary firefighter. I was fifteen years old. And it was, till I was a call department member, I had to be eighteen to join the call. The fifteen-year-olds were a member of the civil defense fire department. And the reason it was civil defense fire department was the town couldn't get insurance for the younger kids to be covered. Where the government, because they were civilian defense firefighters. So when they became eighteen, you apply for the call fire department. We were probably fifteen strong in the auxiliary and thirty, thirty-five strong with the call department at the time. The stipend, it was a stipend we got. It wasn't a set salary. It wasn't an hourly rate, wage. The only time we got an hourly wage, which was set by the chief at the time. If we got recalled to duty for winter storms. Sometimes coverage for if the department was shorthanded or something like that. But when they came to training, they got, I'm gonna use the example, I believe my first call check was a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the year. And if you missed a call, you got deducted twenty-five bucks. So sometimes, when you missed a call or missed training, at the end of the year, you didn't have it paid, but you did it because you volunteered for it. I believe the call department is still the same way today. You get a stipend of five hundred dollars. And they don't get paid to go to training. And not only wage to go to training, it's volunteer. But if the training is being offered by the town, the town pays for that person to do the instructions. But the call department guy coming in, the volunteer coming in, doesn't get paid for it. Same thing when there's a fire. I believe it's still the same way. Call firefighters do not get paid when there's a fire and they're called. For a general on fire, but they'll get paid if they come in for station coverage, take an ambulance call. Sometimes they call in a group for a fire call. They get paid for that.
They get paid for everything else.
Including training? So when they come in for that hundred and ninety-eight hours, they get paid by the hour?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So things have changed. But I think the important thing, we, as a subcommittee, need to look at with HR, the town manager, where we wanna be, how can we get there? If we can't get there, how do we get out of it? And I think we need to look at the long-term issue of manpower at the fire department. We need to come up with a plan for a short-term and long-term plan on how do we better, do a better job. And I know the call departments are very difficult. If you're not, if you don't wanna volunteer and expect to do something, they don't come. Back in the day, American Optical, Hi, Russell Harrington, A and M, and Harrington Hospital. If you were a member of the call fire department, you got paid by the manufacturer if you were working to go to that fire. They expected you to come back after the fire was done and to clean up and you were released. Industry doesn't do that today. You got a fire, they give you a choice sometimes. You either work for us or you work for the fire department. So there is difficulty. Do I wanna see the call department? Absolutely. Does call, call members need to be EMTs to apply?
Initially, no, but that is the designation. We'd like to get them to the EMTs because ninety percent of our call volume is EMT work.
So if they don't wanna be an EMT and they wanna be just a firefighter, the odds are you're not gonna hire them?
No, not true at all. If they, if they commit to a firefighter-one-two training program, within one year's time, they'll remain on the department.
So they'll stay a call firefighter?
Chairman LaZo.
My question was gonna be, so what you're telling me is ninety percent of our guys do ambulance. Ten percent of the time, they fly fires.
It's a ratio that ninety percent of our call volume is, is ambulance work, so...
And ten percent is the flying department?
Yes, if you're gonna look at it that way, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Shannon.
So, that hundred and ninety-eight hours, that's expected of the call department too?
We try to do the best to try to get in all those hours. I can tell you, over the last several years, we've probably gotten twelve of those hours accomplished, but we get the core requirements done. Fit testing for SCVA, CPR classes, as long as they're all up their first aid or first responder type of program. And then we go through the basics.
What's their hourly rate for that?
Four, twenty, I wanna say nineteen. Don't quote me. I think it's nineteen, but ambulance work is thirty-six dollars an hour. So if they're coming for an ambulance call, emergency ambulance call, they'll get thirty-six dollars.
So if they came...
If they're EMTs.
To that hundred and ninety-eight hours or ninety-six, whatever. They could conceivably get paid for, I'm gonna use twenty dollars an hour for a figure, but it could be less than that.
I think it is.
But they get paid for that, okay, so...
I can say, we're kinda talking and, oh, sorry. In regards to the hundred and ninety-two hours, it's even difficult for the full-time staff to complete all of those NFPA required number of hours for firefighters. We do our best that we can. Obviously, with the business of the department, we continue to move forward and try to get training evolutions in. You'll see some of the guys posting things, you know, rope rescue or ladder stuff. So we're doing all of those refresher trainings on a constant basis in between calls. So, we're, to save the hundred and ninety-two hours of completed at the full-time level, that's not happening. That's not happening either. We're probably close to a hundred, maybe a hundred and thirty, but we can say that on an annual basis, that one ninety-two is not bad.
The budgeting of the hourly, the money, I don't remember during budget time of the dollar amount for call firefighters being paid for the training and those kind of things. Is that something that is...
It's in the payroll.
In the payroll or is it, is it as a general payroll? Or is it broke down to common volunteers? It is something?
It is, it is.
I looked through the budget book and I...
It is. It's a career. Fifty-one thirty is overtime, general overtime, fifty-one, I wanna say fifty-one fifty is the call department. It's, it's had like sixteen or eighteen thousand dollars in it every year. That's just for training and stipends and calls.
So, fifteen thousand, how many men?
Eight.
Eight guys.
And we don't go through a lot of it.
Okay.
Because they're not active. Not that they're incentivized. They get the stipend. And then when they do come for training, to reaffirm your question, they get paid for annual training or monthly training whenever they come in and do it. And they get paid for calls. Either, if it's an ambulance call, they get paid a higher, higher wage. If it's a fire call, it's around that twenty dollars. So, it's not like we're ignoring them.
I just wanted to confirm, the hourly rate is just over twenty dollars an hour?
Okay. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your... So, just to follow up on all that. You know, this, this program, I think it was nice back in the day, but this is a different time. Not in, you know, I'm dating myself, but I'm not in the nineteen seventies anymore. When I was in college, I had a couple of roommates that did this kind of thing. They called to volunteer fire, to fight. I think it's basically the same thing. But they worked in their home communities while they were home from, home from school. And they worked in Ithaca, where I went to college, with the Ithaca Fire Department. But they were on call and they went out on calls regularly. I mean, I, I just, it doesn't seem like the folks that we have now with the program are all that interested in doing. Doing this kind of work. If they're not responding to calls, they're not coming in, neither. Now, I think it's a good thing that you're trying to, you know, going out to the high school and getting seven students involved. Maybe, maybe they'll get, you know, maybe they'll get interested in firefighting and one-day firefighters. That, I think is a great community and recruitment tool. You know, the military does something very similar to that, where they have, in many schools, they have junior ROTC. They get kids interested in the military through that. But, but right now, as far as the town is concerned, spending money on program, it seems to me, I think we'd be better off maybe taking that money and funding another full-time equivalent. That we're spending on, on one or two, I don't know how much the program costs. Maybe we take that money and we fund, you know, two or three more full-time equivalents for the fire department. Rather than waste money on a program where we're not getting any benefit from it. We're doing a lot of training, we're putting a lot, we're putting a lot of money out there, but we're not, but the town itself isn't getting any benefit from it. This is my two cents.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chairman, for your... Counsel Kelly, I think you should get a policy. Because a lot are said here, some of them is not true. Because when you go to train as a call firefighter, you don't get paid. And the town don't pay. It's same like the firefighter full-time, they go to the academy, did the town pay for them? Or you haven't, somebody paid, the state paid for the whole training? Full firefighter, did the town pay for training when they go to academy?
So the town pays the employees in a monthly wage, so they're getting paid while they're at the fire academy, but the cost of the fire academy is free.
Correct. So, the call men, the call men, they don't get paid from the town. They go for free. And the whole idea is to raise your child, your kids when they're eighteen. You know, they're excited, hey, I got a red light on the car permit, I got a radio on the fire, I go there, help. Give them, give them a, a, a opportunity and chance to learn, to learn their town, get involved in the community. Get up the computer, get up the phone, open their mind what's going on in the, in the, in the community. Get ready if they wanna be firefighter. That's why now all the town having a hard time founding full-time firefighter. Because they cut in the call department and all these people already graduate from high school, have a different vision of type of work or what they're gonna be. Because there's no education when they're little, there's a firefighter in town, there's a police department in town. And this is what we losing in here. It's not about, the town is not losing much money the way you take a look at it. That's why if you get the policy and look at it and read it, then you understand it more. It's more important too for our kids to open vision what's going on in town and get involved for the safety and their community. And they get future job and then the firefighter, they can find somebody who wanna full-time job or not. That's the whole idea. It's not about, we're losing a million dollars on call department. Very much.
Chairman LaZo.
I still think, you know, it's in the recruitment. Take the military, when the recruitment was down, people weren't signing up. All of a sudden, a change in the presidency. All of a sudden, a different Department of Defense, Secretary of War. All of a sudden, recruitment's up. What I'm talking about is, is there any way we can energize people? To be interested in being the guy that runs into the trouble, not run away from the trouble. When, and I just keep looking at it, I go, I've seen failed programs before in different, like sports, in different stuff. And all of a sudden, something happens. You shake it up and all of a sudden, the interest comes back. I, I don't know if this is the ongoing practice and firefighting profession's in trouble. You know, I just think we should try and help reignite the interest. And people are just gonna walk around saying, oh, it can't be done. I love that bullshit. It can be done. You gotta have the right people there. I took a pop Warner program, I had two teams. Both losing teams. When I left, there were six undefeated teams. Everybody was in a state championship. You need to energize the people. We energize the little kids. You're telling me you can't energize an adult? Well, obviously, you're not good at what you do. That's all I gotta say.
Counselor Kelly.
I, 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 thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your... Counsel LaZo, I, I do appreciate we can do attitude, but sometimes we have to ask, should we do it? And I think this is one of those cases where we have to ask, should we do it? Alright, thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Not. We're gonna move on to identity item number five. Review and discuss the regionalized, to regionalize the town of Southridge Dispatch Operations and entertain a motion to recommend that council vote to support joining the Central Massachusetts Regional Emergency Communications Center, CMRECC.
Go on.
Second.
Town manager.
Sure. This is coming at the request from, I believe, two meetings ago. The committee at the time requested more information, which Chief Woodson has provided. And it came from a recommendation from both chiefs and the town manager to visualize dispatch.
Chief.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I will, I will keep this very short. It's, I understand, I know the direction this is going and I'm a hundred percent confident. I had PD personnel asked to come, dispatch union asked to be here. I said, don't waste your time. So one showed up anyway, from the PD anyway. But, so, for the first time, and I just wanna be on record, because I know going forward, not tonight, I don't intend on getting ugly tonight, but it's going to. When we start talking about numbers in January. So I wanna be very clear. So, for the first time since I can remember, you have the police chief, the fire chief, the police union, the fire union, the dispatch union. In this community, all in agreement on one thing. I've never seen it. You have police chiefs, fire chiefs, town managers and unions from ten other agencies, all in agreement. You've got police chiefs, fire chiefs, unions and dispatches from three new towns that are joining next week. That all agree that this is the best approach to take. I would say rough ballpark figure, that's thousands of years of service in public safety from all the people that I just mentioned. Or at least call it hundreds without exaggerating, saying this is what we should do. But, the council decided that they know what we should do. And that's okay. I would say that I had a council who told me, it's not, it's not a secret, I'm not hiding anything, it's not my style. Sometimes you don't wanna hear, sometimes it's true thurds. I had a council tell me that they spoke to a previous dispatcher of mine that left here, went to a regional center. Hates it and doesn't think Southridge should go forward. My argument is, well, she left, she's still working there. If it's so bad, why doesn't she come back to Southridge? That's actually a rhetorical question. I don't expect an answer from the council. But I would say, I can tell you why. The money and the roles that she has now in the comm center, where there's no longer dealing with prisoners and walking trafficking people. She can do just police or fire, it's a locked-out facility. So, it's insulting to me and not to be disrespectful, I'm certainly not, the county councils allow to have their opinion just like I am. But when you ask the opinion of someone who has like three years in communications and you believe that opinion over a police chief with thirty years. Or over a fire chief with however many years, or over a fire union that's here. I just, the information, the source of your information, the numbers are getting twisted. And that's just to kinda fit in argument. I know everybody does that. But I've given you facts. As far as numbers, you can turn them however you want. I don't wanna argue numbers tonight. We'll be here till midnight. I would say, I respectfully request, and I've talked to the chairman about it, and the vice chair was not here. I just request that we do all of the discussion, not even an argument. The discussion later on about numbers during the budget season in January. And some of those numbers are gonna be pretty high. So again, rather than argue or discuss them here tonight. And one person says this and then I counter with this and then I counter with what they're saying and we go around and around and around and no one ever agrees on anything. I'm just saying that you trust my judgment because you pay me a lot of money to do this job. And I've never been accused of giving you false numbers or false information to make an argument work in my favor. I'm giving you what I believe is the reality and what this community needs. And I've never done anything to hurt Southridge and I never will. So just please, don't listen to people who are twisting numbers because I can argue it either way. I'd rather discuss it later on. And that's common. I also heard, and it was a council who mentioned the twenty thousand dollar radio repair, and that's all that's needed. That is not what's needed, that's not accurate. That's just now to put a Band-Aid on it over the... That's just now to put a Band-Aid on it, over the next couple of years, hopefully we're all still here, there's gonna be, I would say, hundreds of thousands of dollars in capital that are needed to do radio repairs, not just the twenty thousand. Um, no matter what I say, no matter what I recommend, obviously I just went over everybody that's recommended it. You have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of years of experience all saying we should do this, but it's still gonna fail, and that's okay. Um, I would just say, let's move forward, I'm done with it, it's nothing personal against anybody here. You're doing what you think is right, I'm recommending what I think is right. And I would say going forward in January, again, budget discussions, we'll bring it up. And I'm in negotiations right now with our dispatch union, and they're being told that there's plenty of money to get substantial raises, so you'll be hearing from me in the very near future, um, even though I've been told by all the people in town hall that are very knowledgeable numbers, much more knowledgeable than me, that there's absolutely no way the town could ever afford to pay the dispatches, what I'm gonna recommend, so we can be competitive with a regional center. So that's all I have, and again, nothing personal, it's business. Um, I'm just giving you my recommendation, you do with it what you will.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, Chief, could you just, so over again, what you believe the public safety, um, benefits are to this, for this program?
The benefits for the community quickly, uh, it would be, you have a fully functional, fully staffed, not exhausted, ordered in employees being forced to work, being forced to man cell blocks, uh, walk-in traffic, business lines. So many things that go on in our police department on a general basis, not even counting what we're doing with the fire department, ambulance calls, working structured fire calls, but we have one dispatcher working a desk when there's a, a catastrophe on Union Street going on. Um, this, this ensures essentially, it's always gonna be full coverage, there's always gonna be a supervisor there. Everything's gonna always be, not always be done right, but for the majority of the time, it will be done right. And if it's not done right, it's gonna be corrected immediately. It's a win-win. It's not just the cost savings, it's a win-win as far as staffing, you're gonna get the best of the best, they're gonna have the best, um, expenses, it's a great speech, thank you, Chairman. It's, uh, it's one of those things where I, I just, there's no downside to it. And again, from my experience, from the experience of everybody else, from the fire union that's all here tonight, from the police union, I, I can't, and no one is saying no to this except the town council. No one is saying this is a bad idea. It's, it's a loss, Southbridge is getting put last because we're gonna have a, a inferior product as opposed to that comm center. Because that's, that's the way it's going, it's trending, and eventually, and I'm old now, maybe I won't be around. We're gonna be forced to go into a comm center because the state is gonna be done and be like, nope, no more independent standalone stations. So much money.
I know.
Go ahead.
So Chief, then that would be your professional opinion, that going to a regional dispatch system is the best, um, best outcome for public safety, is that correct?
Yes, and I would say the rea, and I try not to say things personal, but I will tell you this. This is the first time since I've been chief that my opinion is being ignored. And I'm, it surprises me because I'm giving you facts, and I think most people in this room trust me. I'm not gonna do what's wrong for Southbridge, I never will, ever. I was born here, and it's being, it's, it's discarded, and things are being twisted to feets, to meet certain arguments, and it's just not true.
If I may ask another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief Norman, do you agree with, with the Chief Woodson?
A hundred and ten percent.
All right, well, so I've taken, I, I've looked at this, all right, I've looked at the numbers, I've looked at the public safety. The fact, to me, one of the things that sways me here is I've got a group of professionals, all right, not just in the chief, not just in Chief Norman, but all the folks here that work in the departments, in the union itself, telling us that this is the best public service option, public, public safety option. I'm all about public safety, and we're gonna, you know, if, one of the things, one of the concerns I've heard raised is, well, you know, we gotta be in Southbridge first, and, and it's a, that's something I a hundred percent agree with, all right? But sometimes, being Southbridge first may, might mean doing a regional program like this. And if I've got professionals who have got years and years of experience in public safety telling me that this is the way to go, the town of Southbridge, the people in Southbridge will be safer, and the money, I, I think this is gonna be savings in the long run, but I don't think this, that, that even is, is really an issue for me. It's the public safety aspect of this. And, and, and if, if you're telling me that this is based on your professional experience, that this is the best public safety option, then this is what we should support as a council. It should be this, because this will benefit the town best, this will benefit the people. The people of the town will be safer because of, of regional, of going to a regional dispatch system. So, thank you, I, that's all I've got to say.
Chairman Lozo.
The professionals sold us on taking it out of the fire department to put more men on the floor, and this is gonna be the best way to do it, and put it in the police station. And we're gonna put thousand-dollar chairs and the whole nine yards, we had a Cadillac at the police department. And the department head said, this is the best thing you could ever do. Now, after we spent all that money, the professionals now are gonna tell us to regionalize. And I refer back, maybe I've been around a long time, maybe too long. We regionalize our landfill, how'd it work for us? It was the best thing you could ever do. Hush, higher wood recycling, get rid of your landfill. Less work for the workers, more money, great. How'd it work? Water, don't put Southbridge first, we paid Charlton for our water to go there, in the water field. The professionals said, this is the best deal, this is what we gotta do. Bullshit. This is Southbridge first, I live here, he lives in Charlton, he lives in Wester. I represent this town. Nothing personal, just strictly business.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chairman, through you, through the chiefs. Since you are, you become a chief, the way the dispatcher is now, did you have any incidents because of the dispatcher? Did you have any critical condition, dispatcher didn't dispatch correct, a person die, or wouldn't respond on time? Did your man, as a police chief, run the police station all these years, you're the chief, I don't wanna talk before that? You have any issue with your dispatcher and your man in the ground, or you're proud of him the way they run the station and, and, and respond to the public?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would say for the police side of the house,
Yes.
they do an outstanding job.
I got the answer, thank you, Chief.
Yes, yes.
Same question I'm asking you. Do you have any issue with the dispatcher, your man went to the wrong places, or somebody died because the dispatcher didn't do their job? Or you never was covers, or you have any problem as a chief? When you took over, was this dispatcher what the police department run?
Yes, I have.
Can I, we hear it, because we never heard it?
Yes, that's exactly right. So over, over the time between linking all of our CAD information and our software and things like that on an everyday basis right now, we've been having problems with times and, and record-keeping perspectives. Um, I will say that the yes in regards to what your life-threatening or life-saving attempt was, we had a May Day on a, on a firefighter May Day, you remember what those were? It was unnoticed by the dispatch center at the time. That's the dispatcher's job to make sure that that gets recognized in the incident, so what happened? Nobody got hurt, but I will say, it was missed. So, yes, I will say.
So the dispatcher didn't know the May Day, is that lack of, of training?
I, I don't know who the dispatcher was.
Responsible for the training?
Police department.
So police, Mr. Chief, now he's putting all the responsibility on you. And you telling me they're doing outstanding, standing job, and now we have a lack of communication or lack of training, sorry. Lack of a training in your department, and you never came to the council and you say, "Council, I need more support to train my staff because we have an incidence, my, my dispatcher not trained well," or you lacking of your leadership, maybe? I'm just asking you, I'm not accusing, I'm just trying to figure why we have to go dispatcher, original. What the issue right now we facing, do we go regional dispatch?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I would argue, or I would have a discussion with you about it, that I'm very familiar with that call and that, the missed May Day. And I would say that it was because they were overwhelmed. There was minimal staff working because we cannot find people that wanna work, and they were dealing with prisoners, walk-in traffic, all of which would be eliminated if it was a regional sound.
Interrupting me.
Yeah.
He says, she doesn't know what that mean? That's not overwhelming, this is a lack of training from being trained by the chief of the police department. Make sure his staff training, he's throwing the ball on you, now you responsible for your staff. What you say before, we run the police station, perfect with the dispatcher, with the fire department, we never had any mis, I never heard of that, that's the first time, I've been five year plus council, this is the first time I heard dispatcher sent the training and get a job, she doesn't know what May Day, get my son, three, four, eight years old, he know what's May Day mean?
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair, I would say that, I would argue that it wasn't a lack of training. I would argue that it's just new people coming in the door that haven't had time to get the proper training. They've only been there for a week. That mistake was made by a one-week employee.
So you're gonna tell me, Chief, in the original council, the whatever dispatcher we're going to, that's not gonna happen? I live a twenty,
That's probably unlikely.
I live a twenty-eight years in town, that's the first time I heard was mistake, dispatcher doesn't know what May Day mean. That mean we have to quit? So that mean police department, they should get out of the business, give it to the state police. Fire department, make it regional fire department, no more local, we're all human. Could be didn't hear it, could be anything. So now because that little lack, we gonna change what we built and what we trust in your department? Because he said, yes, you wanna go that way because she doesn't know what May Day mean?
Again, through,
Go ahead, Chief.
Three, we go back and forth online, counsel, but I would, that's not the only reason. And back in twenty twenty when we made the transition, at the time it worked, at the time it was the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Things have changed over the last five years.
Thank you. I don't see anything, Chairman, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Provost.
I got a question. If someone yells May Day across the radios, don't all you guys hear it?
Three of us.
Well, who was on the, on the, uh, on the fire ground?
I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Through you, Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
President Jeffrey Clark. I called the May Day. It was three of us on scene of a structured fire that we should've had seventeen people on. The dispatcher was, I'm assuming by herself,
Yep.
dealing with not only the police, the twenty people calling in this fire, and dispatching us and multiple ambulances, and calling in all off-duty firefighters. So to, to sit here and put that pressure on one person, going to a regional dispatch center is a no-brainer. Not only for our safety, but for the safety of the public in that building, responding to that building, in and around that building. I don't think you guys wanna be dealing with a line of duty deaf here. It's very costly, none of us want that. And I, I think that the council here is not taking this seriously. Uh, Counsel Dow likes to bring up this disrespect thing. At no point did we have disrespect to you. We're hearing from tonight disrespect from you guys in every other council meeting. We've seen disrespect to the chair,
Your full.
of the chief, to the office of the.
That's what you're full of.
Chairman Lozo, calm down, thank you.
Oops. So, from our aspect, it's a safety issue on us and the public.
You didn't answer my question.
What was your question?
Obviously.
I asked you, when you yell a May Day, doesn't everybody hear it? Yes or no?
Essentially, yes.
Thank you.
However, did I, did I interrupt that?
Go ahead.
Good.
The three of us were doing jobs
Let me ask my question.
that we may not have heard it. If we, if we had the proper staff each on site, and they were able to call in the off-duty members, they would've been outside listening to that. There's three people inside the building, one person fell to the floor, called the May Day, just three of us. So the three of us were right next to each other, so we all heard it.
Counsel Martin.
Well, I wanna take a turn to some, a different subject, because it seems like this one is, is getting pretty intense. Uh, we're just talking about the money here because that's the real benefit, is the savings. I understand that people are trying to say that if you regionalize, you're gonna get better service. Why are you gonna get better service? It's because we have some problems that we've identified now, much to Counsel Dow's, uh, comments haven't really been told about. I've been told by, uh, certain people that I've spoken to, police and fire, if we had done better job of communicating these problems over the last five to eight years, we might not be in this situation the way we are today. I did speak a little bit at the last council meeting about how, uh, taxes are up against the levy, you have all this waste at the school department, nobody to give it back to us to help, but we're really only talking about three hundred ninety thousand dollars in savings, four hundred thousand dollars in savings, that'll probably come back at, in a form of something like a few employees to work at the police department. And after, uh, receiving some information back from Chief Woodson, um, I'm not trying to make the numbers cute or the way anybody's trying to describe it, but I wanna know exactly how much money gets increased in the police budget if we were to take a local approach to fixing this locally, to staffing it properly locally, which would mean, according to the chief's recommendation, Mr. Chief Woodson, was, uh, director, three supervisors, and then a, uh, an additional dispatch person, because there's nine, there would be ten with three supervisors and a director. If you then increase by ten thousand dollars the base pay of each dispatch employee, and then, there's about forty thousand dollars a year in, uh, software and hardware fees that are associated that you have to have in order to continue running dispatch locally. The grand total of adding all that staff and giving them the higher pay, so you have more qualified people, is around three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars added to the police budget, which you have to note that about a hundred and eighty grand would come out of, uh, NOR's budget, for example, where they're gonna have to pay benefits and health insurance. So, three eighty plus, plus one eighty, you know, five sixty. But again, from the police budget, you're talking about three eighty in one direction to fix it ourselves, and by the way, if there's such a huge problem that the town council doesn't care about, sounds like we wanna empower it locally, which a local fix would be in place July first, twenty twenty-six, when a regional fix wouldn't be in place until, let's say, March of twenty twenty-seven. So I don't think that this town council has any interest in dropping the ball in the situation. And we're talking about, do you wanna save four hundred thousand dollars and go regional? Or do you wanna spend four hundred thousand dollars and have an elite local dispatch center? This town is a rural town, it has closer to twenty-two thousand people in it, off the books. It has urban problems, it has more calls, I believe, than the other people that are in this, uh, ten towns or whatever, by the time they're done with it. Southbridge needs that local flavor, I'm telling you, you're gonna have more mistakes coming from the regional side. I've heard stories from people who work at regional dispatch that say there's huge disconnect when talking to people about local things. And it, it just, you know, it would've been different if we had given the Pleasant Street property to the, to this regional place, and now everybody from all ten towns are working in Southbridge. And now we have backup who even knows, oh, we're at the bottom of this, uh, Crane and River and, and Pleasant and Plimpton, and I can tell you exactly where we are, okay? Bottom line is, from a financial perspective, which is the only benefit, okay? Because you can't tell me that the chief of police's opinion is wrong when he comes to us and says, I can fix it locally for three eighty-three. You, it, it is BS that regionalization is the only way to fix it because his expertise tell me otherwise. So I'm the flavor that votes no, we're gonna fix it in town later in budget season. That's my opinion, and it's not changing. I'm not selling the farm of the only thing that makes it good to live in this town anymore, police and fire. I'm not selling their communications, I'm not cutting off the Michael Jordan of our team's left hand and giving it to the commissioner. Why? Four hundred thousand dollars in either direction, that's all we're talking about. I'm a no vote, and I will not change on that, and I am doing what's best for Southbridge first.
Any more discussion? Counsel Shanyu.
I wanna disrespect you.
But.
But. In all my, in all my time
Yep.
on council, I've supported every single thing that you brought forward. Did I think some of the numbers were fudged a little bit to make it look better? Yeah, actually, we all do that kinda. We, we all do that kinda. In the beginning of this, I was in favor of this dispatch being regionalized. I'm in favor of ambulance being dis, be regionalized. I was in favor of even the fire service being, uh, and regionalized because I see the, the trend today of people not wanting to do the job, don't, have no interest, they're not being paid enough. I can remember the day when I worked with thirty-two full-time firefighters, today they work with twenty-one, doing maybe three times the amount of calls. But as this thing e-evolved, I I listened to what you had to say with your papers that you gave, provided us. And I listened to what people on the street had to say. I've listened to some employees, both fire and police. And they're not gonna come to you and, and criticize you, and I wouldn't either, if I was a private, you know? I wouldn't do that, and I think you know that. But the things that I asked, and you gave me, uh, some answers on was, what happens to the current dispatchers? At the meeting when you presented this, you told me, you said you guaranteed the nine people would have jobs.
I still do.
And this thing here says, generally dispatchers are offered positions within the regional center. That's not a guarantee. The other thing that is disturbing to me is the fact that, uh, we talked about losing local control when we go to regional center. Oh, you're not gonna lose local control. You're gonna have the ability to have two people, two chiefs, and maybe even elected fish will be on the board. That's not local control. That's a regionalized control, that the other towns could band together and... Now, listen to what Southbridge had to say.
You mean like to vote tonight?
Like to vote tonight.
Yeah.
Like to vote tonight. That's right. And that's what I'm elected for.
All right, let's move forward.
I'm elected to do what I think is, would be what would be the best interest of this community. And when you sat here last, at the last meeting, and you said, "Listen, whatever you guys wanna do, I'll make it work."
And we will.
And I believe you on that issue. But I also believe that the council has to give you the tools to work with to make a big regional dis- I mean, a local dispatch. I think it's important that we give the tools, manpower, the hourly wage. I, I've sat here two and a half years, and really, this is the first time that I've heard a lot of, uh, issue about pays and those kinda things in the last couple months. Two years ago, I didn't hear that when I first started, you know? Do I know there's problems with dispatch? I called you up and said, "Jeez, what happened at this fire?" I called you up, the, the fire chief, "What happened at this fire?" You know? And yeah, we're working on it. When I did the research on the pros and cons of this thing, and I, and I looked over again, I, I have the time to be able to do that, and regionalized dispatch has problems with employees maintaining the level of service, the, uh, retention of employees because of the stress involved with the job. And, and the biggest thing I read was the fact that your regionalized dispatchers don't know your neighborhoods. They don't know it. You got a G, GSI system that comes on board, tells you where, "I live at two forty-three Dresser Street." But when my neighbor calls up, says, "I'm at the corner or, or, or near the hospital," and that dispatcher doesn't know where the hospital is, because he's sitting in Auburn or Rutland, having that little bit of control is sometimes self-satisfactory for our citizens. And that's why I've changed my vote. It's, it was, it was, I was torn about this thing, and I still am torn. And, and I, I, I respect what you do. I wouldn't, or I wouldn't want your job, just because of what happens here tonight, you know? Uh, it's hard, you know? We, we listen to criticism, you know? We give it, they give it, we all give it. And I, I just, I would like it to be here. I wanted, I was actually sold that we were gonna probably have it here in Southbridge by the manager, by suggesting a few locations. And then all of a sudden, the week before the things were coming out, I got a call from an Auburn firefighter telling me where the dispatch center was gonna be. From an Auburn firefighter, a week before it was presented, and it's still not a done deal yet. And that's gonna be millions of dollars that, uh, E-911 is gonna be paid. But I was also under the impression that, until you clarified that last week, was that we, we're gonna lose 911 funds. And we're not gonna lose those funds. And I, I think, I think we need, as a council and, and, and departments, to look at, how can we best make it work here in Southbridge? And if it, if it doesn't work, like I said, I can remember when Ron, the, the San, the, the Angelo that was here, sold the bill of goods. They never, never gave you the equipment that was supposed to be done to give you the... And it's still an ongoing issue now. You got a tower up there that's just starting to probably go back on, online. You know, so I, I blame it going back then with the town manager and council not funding it the way it should've been. But I think this is a time for us to have an opportunity to find out how we can make it work for Southbridge, and how we can have our control here. And, and, you know?
Can I, can I just, just quickly, again, can I just say, Mr. Chair, so, I know temperature's a little bit hot in the room right now, but just to kinda cool it down a little bit. I've had hours and hours of conversations with not Counsel Montague, everybody in their own, uh, about this. It's not, the sky's not falling. Our commu- our communication center is not an absolute failure. Our staff does the best they can do with what we give them. If the town appropriates the, uh, the amount of money or funding, puts it in place where we can get things accomplished moving forward, more staff, and some more supervisory, um, roles, would, would it be okay? And I told Counsel Montague, I told the chairman, "It's gonna work. We're gonna make it work, because that's what we're here for, right?" So, I don't wanna get up here and talk about how terrible it is and how terrible our dispatches are. Because that's not what I'm here to say. I'm just saying they do an outstanding job with what we've given them so far. They just, we need additional, either resources, or moving to a communication center, which I thought was a good idea, because it's gonna save the town money, and it's gonna give them an immediate, uh, they're gonna be in the showpiece of Central Massachusetts for communications, as far as equipment, radio comms, um, salary, healthcare, everything else. But that's okay. Again, I'm not, when I walk out of here, I'm done. I'm gonna move on, and we're gonna march in whatever direction we have to. But, um, it's, again, our dispatches do an outstanding job. I put them up against anybody. If you can work here, you can work anywhere. I say it about my cops all the time. If you can work here, you can work anywhere. It's a difficult environment. So, that's not, I know there was some shots, you know, whatever, taken about staff and poor training. Their, they do is the best they can do with what they got. And this was just an option that I recommended, that may put them in a little bit better scenario to succeed. That's all.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Trigo. Chief, what's, it's gonna be any different other than the 911 call go to Auburn and they forward it to us? Anything other than only the 911 call? So, when the call come back to Southbridge, isn't it we're supposed to have a dispatcher in place, no matter what?
No.
So, we're not gonna have a dispatcher at all?
Correct. No, no dispatch center at, at the police station.
No more, regardless. So, the local phone number, who pick up?
I can speak to that, so, and we talked about this in the last meeting. The business line's gonna be answered by a local person.
Correct. But who's the local person?
Either a civilian or I, we spoke about this in the last meeting. Yeah, well, a civilian or a police officer. We could work as a council in public safety, on who would be in there.
My question, you still have to update the tower? You still have a dispatcher front counter twenty-four hour, no matter what?
The tower would be updated with, through 911 department, not through Southbridge.
So, how do you, how do you dispatch your, uh, your guys on scene? Uh, who's gonna get back the force?
Either a civilian or a police officer would be inside.
So, you still have to have a tower to be able to communicate with the radio, to have the one you have for your local guy, correct, in your station? So, that, that update, and no matter what you do, you still have to update this, regardless if you have a regional dispatcher or not?
Correct, but we wouldn't be paying for any of the updates. I, I, we can go around and around and around in a circle, but we wouldn't pay for the updates.
You wouldn't be paying the updates?
If we're part of a non-local communication center, there's about twenty million dollars on the table right now.
So, they will update your tower?
Do a complete radio infrastructure on every community, yes.
In, in, in the town?
If it's a radio transmission, uh, microwave to microwave, not my air vector, yes. It would be paid for, yes.
But you still have to have a full-time dispatcher in your, in your apartment?
In the building, yes.
So, and so pretty much, you're not getting rid of dispatch completely?
It'd be more of a clerk position.
So, when, when, when the guy called, "May Day, May Day," who, who, who called, who picked up that call?
Auburn, or wherever it is.
And then they have to send it back to Southbridge, Southbridge send it back to the guy?
No, it'd be, I, not to speak out of it. It would be direct radio com right from Auburn, right to our people on the street. It wouldn't be like a phone call or radio to my dispatcher in Southbridge, no. It'd be an immediate, they hit the mic, and it goes right to the person in the field.
So, it's still, but the local numbers, the fire department, the Southbridge, the police department?
Business lines, yeah.
They need, uh, dispatcher at the front counter, correct?
Well, I can't speak for the fire side, but we would need one, yes.
So, it's, so technically, if we vote on a regional dispatcher, the fire department will take back the local line?
So, it's very similar.
Stay in your department?
Through, through the chair. We would have all the business lines associated with the fire department to be answered either at the police station, or if it's a business line with, that goes right to the fire station, the five-four-three-O line, it's gonna go to the fire station. It's gonna be answered by the executive secretary during the day, or the firefighters on the desk, just like we do now. Those are just non-business people calling for permission.
So, when we went to the fire department, me and other people, and with the door locked, and nobody in the fire department, who's gonna answer the call?
It goes to a voicemail, unfortunately, because that's what was set up eight years ago when the dispatchers were removed from the fire station.
So, if it's an emergency, no matter what, you have to call 911 anymore? You can't call local dial, the local number?
Recommendation is to always call 911 for emergencies, no matter what emergency it is.
So, you can't call anymore your local department on your local numbers?
You can't call, not for the ambulance, no. Recommended is that you call 911 for the ambulance. We, majority of, good majority of all of our ambulance and fire calls and police calls are received on 911. Because everybody's on a cellphone nowadays, and that's the first thing that goes, the 911, goes right to the dispatcher. So, to answer your question on the ambulance.
I call local number. I don't call 911.
Well, in the fire, if you're looking for the fire department or the ambulance, and there's nobody there, because that's, they're all out on calls, you're just gonna delay time for your, your situation, the fire, or your, your patient, or your person.
So, you think that's more safety for the, our, our community?
In this case, if we have our business lines and everybody's out of the building, is, because that's not gonna change. We can actually push a button on our phone system and send it to the police station, to the, to the new dispatch center, to answer that.
And if you forget?
You know what? Mistakes happen.
Chairman Lozlo, did you have anything to say?
Yeah, just gotta close up. No matter how it will go, no matter what happens, we're going back to work on this issue anyways. I mean, there are people from back in the day, when I say back in the day, five, six years ago, thought they should've never taken it out of the fire department and split it the way it was. They thought the fireman was very professional in answering the calls. They thought the police officer was very professional in answering the calls. Well-trained, no town, and it was working fine. And this idea came up of a dispatch where supposedly, supposedly, is a cure to a manpower problem. But the thing is, this council is not anti-manpower. It seems to me that we support and continue to support the recommendations from the chiefs. So, for myself, whether this passes or doesn't pass, if we're gonna go back to work, Chief, I love your passion. You're really heart and soul in this. I disagree with you a thousand percent. That's okay. That's not gonna stop me from liking you or working with you, because I still think you're a champ. You know, you're not quite Lenny LaPorte, but John was there. He was the best politician I ever met. That was the department head, it was a firefighter. But I wanna thank you very much for all the information, time that was put into this, because the council did ask for, to get involved in the study. And when we asked to get into the study, there's gonna be a this debate after the study. And you're gonna disagree. We're gonna all disagree at some point. But the bottom line come down to is, we gotta keep Southbridge the first and foremost, and that's what we think we're doing. It's just an opinion thing. After all the information's digested, we have a job to do, you have a job to do. You do your job well. I mean, let's go forward, and let's fix it if it's broke, and if it ain't, we won't have to fix it, but we'll work on it.
Counsel Shanyu.
And that's, what you have to say is, the thing that was disturbing to us, to me, was the fact that this dispatch center, regional dispatch center was discussed amongst town manager, the department heads, and they hired somebody. Council was not involved with this until we got this on October sixth.
Okay, is that it? And move on to voting. All those in favor?
Did you have a vote?
All those, yeah, we did.
What'd you say?
All those in favor, all those opposed. Motion fails. Agenda item number six, adjourned.
So, move.
I'm moving.